Welcome to the May 12, 2025 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. For work sessions like this one, there is no opportunity for public comment, and those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcasts and Meetings Materials page of the City of Eugene website. In case of a medical emergency, an automated external defibrillator, an AED, is located on the counter behind staff located to your left on the west side of the room. And in case of an emergency evacuation, emergency exits are through the double doors located at the back of the room, and the doors to the patio can also be used as needed. Thank you again for joining us. I call the May 12, 2025 City Council Work Session to order. The Eugene City Council will now meet in executive session held pursuant to ORS 192.6602F exemption, public records, ORS 912.3551 internal advisory communications, and ORS 912.3552 personal privacy exemption, and ORS 912.6602A employment of public officers, employees, and agents. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to record or report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, and at the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the meeting. For councilors who are attending virtually, please log out of this public meeting and log back in using the executive session Zoom invitation. Of the May 12, 2025 City Council Work Session, I will now turn to the Assistant City Manager, Kristi Hammett, to introduce our second topic, a work session on the police auditor selection. Welcome to the May 12, 2025 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. For work sessions like this one, there is no opportunity for public comment, and those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcasts and Meetings Materials page of the City of Eugene website. In case of a medical emergency, an automated external defibrillator, an AED, is located on the counter behind staff located to your left on the west side of the room. And in case of an emergency evacuation, emergency exits are through the double doors located at the back of the room, and the doors to the patio can also be used as needed. Thank you again for joining us. I call the May 12, 2025 City Council Work Session to order. The Eugene City Council will now meet in executive session held pursuant to ORS 192.6602F exemption, ORS 912.3551 internal advisory communications, and ORS 912.3552 personal privacy exemption, and ORS 912.6602A employment of public officers, employees, and agents. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to record or report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, and at the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the meeting. For councilors who are attending virtually, please log out of this public meeting and log back in using the executive session Zoom invitation. Of the May 12, 2025 City Council Work Session, I will now turn to the Assistant City Manager, Kristi Hammett, to introduce our second topic, a work session on the police auditor selection.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I'm joined tonight at the table by Carrie Beraldo, the interim Employee Resource Center Director, who is here tonight to talk about the opportunity to hire a new police auditor. So Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Again, Carrie Beraldo, interim director for the Employee Resource Center, and tonight's session is an opportunity for Council to appoint a new police auditor. As background, since the former auditor, Leah Pitcher, vacated the position in September of 2024, Council has been working on a national recruitment. Steps taken as part of that recruitment included identifying a national recruitment firm to assist city staff with outreach, Council conducting an initial review of applicants, city staff conducting first-round interviews, and then final interviews with Council, a stakeholder panel, and a community panel which occurred in mid-March. Council identified a top candidate from those panel interviews in March to undergo a full employment background check, which is now complete, with Mr. Renetsky passing all components. At this time, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for discussion and Council's consideration to appoint Mr. Renetsky into the auditor role.
Thank you, Karen, for that update. I will now open the floor for Council discussion. Discussion from Council? Counselors Lenka.
Yeah, I was impressed by the background check, and I came back with glowing references to Mr. Renetsky. And I believe he was my first pick after the interviews, and I'm eager to have him join us as the police auditor.
Other discussion? Thank you. Counselor Gross.
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to be brief on this, but I do want to echo what Counselor Zalinka just said, that I was very impressed with the interview, his background, and I think the background investigation or review just solidified all that for me. So I feel very comfortable moving forward, and I look forward to getting him on board. Thank you.
Counselor Clark? And then Counselor Yay.
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you keeping track at home, you can mark this in your program. Alan and I absolutely agree on this candidate being an absolutely wonderful candidate, and I look forward to him joining us as well. And I agree with Randy, of course, obviously, but just trying to be funny. So, little levity, but I'm... You're right. Sorry. I like joke is my default position, but I look forward to this guy being here and us having the position normalized to a degree after some time of changes and activity. Thank you.
Counselor Yay.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, but I also wanted to take this last chance to thank staff. It was amazing to work through this process with everyone and all the things going on behind the scenes. I'm sure you have a lot of thanks for the people that aren't here, but including yourself, and I just wanted to take a quick moment to just thank you. We really appreciate the support.
Thank you to staff for all of their support. Seeing no other questions... Oh, sorry, Counselor Leach.
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, thank you, staff, for this process. I am looking forward to working with Mr. Renetsky as well. You know, just this morning, I met with our interim auditor, and I was asking kind of what her hope was in someone to work with, and I think Mr. Renetsky really fits exactly the bill in a lot of ways. So I was really encouraged by the information we heard about the background check and references today in our exec session. So yeah, I'm excited to move forward.
And Counselors Lenka.
Yeah, as we move forward, and it looks like we're going to appoint Mr. Renetsky, I just wanted to take this time to thank our former police auditor for stepping in the breach for a couple of months. Mark Kissner, he did another admirable job in flying in from Florida and bailing us out for a couple of months and providing the leadership and steady hand that he did for the months was very much appreciated.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from Council, I will turn to the Council President to put a motion forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to appoint Craig Renetsky as the Eugene Police Auditor and to authorize the Council President to negotiate an employment agreement with an annual salary that falls within the advertised range of $125,798 to $169,811 with final employment agreement approval to be given by Council through the consent agenda prior to its execution.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion from Council? Seeing none, we'll now take a vote for this motion. Looking around the room, no tablets in front of us. Counselors, all in favor? Seven, eight? Eight in favor and zero opposed, and the motion passes with a vote of eight to zero. Thank you very much. That concludes this agenda item. We will now move to our final agenda item of this work session. I will turn to the Assistant City Manager, Kristi Hammett, to introduce our third topic, a work session on the City Manager Recruitment Process Initial Steps.
Thank you again, Mayor. Sad and exciting at the same time to be here to be talking about the replacement of our current city manager, Sarah Meddy. Sarah has recently announced her retirement intent for the end of the calendar year. And tonight, Mia Keriaga, Central Services Director, will kind of go over some process options for you, and we're looking forward to hearing your input.
Hi, I'm Mia Keriaga, Central Services Director. I'm also here with Catherine Brotherton, city attorney, who's here to support the kickoff of your process to consider recruiting a new city manager. So tonight, we're hoping to obtain direction from you about the path that you'd like to use to move through a national recruitment and select a city manager. We presented a couple of options in the agenda item summary, which I'll go over in a few slides, but we do hope to get direction from you tonight. So I want to outline key process steps because these are components that all eight councilors will be involved with regardless of the option that you select. And that includes identifying a recruiter so that we can comply with public contracting law. We will likely use a request for information process and obtain proposals from potential recruiters from around the country and present those to all of you one way or another so that you can select a recruiter to work with. And I'll talk more about what a recruiter will do in just a minute. When it comes to posting the position, all of you will have an opportunity to weigh in on the job description and the way that the job is presented when it's advertised. Public engagement has traditionally been a component of recruiting a city manager. For example, last time you recruited outside of the organization for a city manager, a public hearing was held, and all eight councilors were there to listen. All of you would be engaged in the interview process, and of course, all of you would be engaged in the selection and hire. So because you're fresh from a process where we used a recruiter to help conduct outreach but not provide a full scope of services, I just want to remind us all of what a recruiter can provide when you select one. A recruiter would meet with all of you individually to obtain information about the attributes that you'd like to see in a city manager, get your input on the job description, as I previously said, and work with you to really understand the kind of person that you're hoping to recruit and hire for the position. They'd then conduct a really robust outreach nationally, or maybe even beyond, to source candidates. And you'd likely be working with a firm who has really strong networks in this arena, has probably already talked with folks who may be interested, and certainly has experience in recruiting city managers in other areas. That recruiter could also help screen applicants. Our hope is that, you know, it would be a really big pool, and you'd want their assistance in weighing through those. And then they would also help shortlist so that you're seeing the top candidates who align with everything that you've talked to the recruiter about rather than having to weed through maybe some that are less qualified. They'd also help coordinate interviews. That can be a process that you end up outlining and working on together. That could involve, you know, public panels and all of that kind of thing, but the recruiter could help you do that. They'd also work on obtaining feedback and facilitate feedback from the other parties that you engage in the interview process and consolidate that for your review when you're considering who you'll ultimately hire. you're considering who you'll ultimately hire. And then they will also help with selection support, whether that's working on the final contract or helping the person relocate if that's something they need to do. So that's the full scope that a recruiter would normally provide. In your AIS, we outlined two options, and I don't expect that you can read this slide, but it is in your printout, too. And these two options, well, they're just two. You could also choose an alternate path, or this evening, you could decide that you want to have another conversation to select the option that you want to use to move forward. When putting this table together, the primary goal was to convey how much time each of these options may take, and really, the most, the biggest contributor to how much time this might take is actually Council agenda time. So we outlined the number of meetings that each of these options will require. So under the full Council engagement, that means that at each of the steps at the top, we'd have a full Council meeting to consider each of those. So when it comes to vendor selection for recruitment, we would bring you all of the submittals from a request for information. You will have all reviewed all of them and then score them and eventually arrive at the recruiter you want to use. Alternatively, in option two, where you might elect to use a Council Committee, which is allowed by code, or engage Council Leadership to do some of the work ahead of Council meetings, that group would review all of the submittals from a request for information and then bring you a recommendation for your vote and approval. In step two, in the job posting, in any case, all of you will have the opportunity to contribute to what a job posting might look like. The full Council could work together in a meeting, in a work session, to draft that and review and approve changes. Or in option two, that would be done by a committee or Council Leadership using your input, and then they'd bring it to a meeting for approval. In step three, very similar, so when it comes to process design, all of you could do that in a work session, or you could have a Council Committee work on that and bring you something to review and approve. And then steps four and five would be the same regardless. All eight of you would engage in interviews and selecting a final candidate. So just to recap, the first option would, we're estimating, would use roughly 12 work sessions and take 10 to 12 months, and using a Council Committee or Council Leadership would require around seven meetings and maybe eight months. Of course, there are always variables. So again, these were the four options presented in your AIS, which is full Council engagement or to use Council Leadership or a Council Committee. And if that's the path you desire, we'd hope to learn from you who you want to be on the Council Committee or if you want to use Council Leadership. And of course, you always have the option to use a hybrid path or have more discussion.
Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you, Mia, for that presentation. I'll now open the floor for discussion. Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, thanks. I, I lived through that process with Mike back in 2007, and while it worked pretty well, I think it can be improved from a process standpoint. It ended up with a good result in hiring John Reese. I, I can't think of a more important decision that the Council has to make, and hiring a new city manager will have a profound impact, not only on the organization and the community, but also on the work that we all do as a Council. And I believe that should be a Council-driven process. And while it'll take more work on our part, because it's the most important thing that we probably will decide as counselors, we really need to have full Council engagement, and all of these decisions need to be made by the Council. So, and I would caution against using a committee. We've, I've seen that not work so well in the past, in part because you end up explaining it to all the other counselors anyway, so why not just have everybody in the first round instead of having to do it twice? So, and, and we should be working on this together and conferring and coming to a decision. So I'm full in favor of option one, the full Council engagement at every step, Council-driven process. I do question whether or not we need to take 12 months to do it, or 10 to 12 months. I think we could do it faster than that if possible. If we do it on the lower end of that scale, that would be great. I think that's kind of dependent on our calendar, but I think we can believe that there's something that is more important than this, but it might come up, but I think this could trump all the other issues that we have.
Counselor Koschinsky.
Thank you. I do agree that this is probably the most important decision that we'll, we'll be making in the foreseeable future, and we do need to take time and care with this decision and with this process. As a clarifying sort of question about how a committee would work, you know, the way you initially described sort of writing the, writing the job description, writing the job posting, if that were all of us, would we have like a blank slate, and this group would be wordsmithing something at the table? Whereas if there was a committee, the committee would come to us with a draft that we'd then have the opportunity to provide feedback, suggest changes to? Is that how you would see that working?
Yes, we currently have a job description for the city manager. It hasn't been refreshed in quite some time, and so I imagine that the recruiter would work with all of you to receive your feedback and take a crack at updating that before it comes back to you or a committee for updates, and then to the Council for approval.
Okay. And so with a committee or with the full Council, those key points of, let's look at the job draft, let's look at the job posting draft, let's select a recruiter, those would all end up being full Council decisions regardless?
Yes, they would come to Council as a recommendation for approval.
Um, I've done, I haven't, have not engaged in a city manager hiring process before, but I've done hiring for executive directors for boards. And whenever you have a hiring process that has a large group of decision makers involved, I think being able to have that screening process where you're narrowing down some of the things, provided that the folks on that group are representing sort of the diversity of opinions and needs on Council, I think makes that process tend to run a lot smoother and allows for there to be clearer direction. So I would be supportive of a Council Committee. I think, given the length of the process, we would want, I think if we went with Council Leadership, would want to discuss how that would work since Leadership would probably change halfway through this process, and so that would be something to consider.
So you have Counselor Groves, and then Clark, Keating, and Leach, and then Evans. Counselor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mia, for bringing this to us. I agree, this is definitely one of the most important decisions that we will make as a Council. I agree with Counselor Zelenka that if there's a way to shorten it without losing quality of process, I think that that would be great so we can get somebody here on board sooner rather than later. I was glad to see that community engagement was included in this process. I think we should also make sure we involve our labor units and, as well as, I would personally like to see a survey of our employees. I think sometimes they can provide really valuable insight into the position and what's needed, and not, not to have one of critiquing the past, but what are they looking for moving forward? What do they think would work best? I think that would be helpful for us. And then another point, I want to appeal to the media in the room. Help us educate the public what a city manager does. I mean, we receive a lot of public input on a variety of things, and quite frequently, there's a misunderstanding of what's actually going on and what the roles and responsibilities are. And I think it's important in our Council manager form of government that people understand what the position is responsible for and what they are not responsible for, and I think that will lead to better input from the community. So I'm hoping we can find a way to engage in that some way, and that'd be really helpful if the media were, were able to help us with that, and I think you'd be doing the community a real service by helping explain that.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. As the other counselor at the table who's been down this road before, I want to say that I don't, just go to your head, but I, I absolutely agree with all the points that Alan put forward. This, I feel very strongly needs to be a full Council effort and not a subcommittee of the Council. In addition to what both Randy and Alan have said that I agreed with, there's one other, there's one other realm that needs to be reflected, I think, in the experience of these, of the candidates we might choose from, and that's the community's opportunity to meet with them, too. That's, that was done previously when we hired John. I thought it was done well. I'd like to see us have as broad an exposure to different groups in our community as a potential manager can have so that we have the benefit of the opinion of a diverse section of our community and their impressions of these candidates. I hope that also we can, we can get this somewhere between eight to 10 months as well. But again, I think it's something that, as Alan mentioned, is one, if not the most important effort that a counselor ever participates in, and as a result, I think every counselor needs to be a part of the process. Thank you.
Counselor Keating, and then Counselor Leach.
Thank you, Mayor. I could incur with everything Counselor Zelenka at all articulated. The same argument that I made a couple of years ago and others made about the Revenue Committee being an all-in effort, that we all essentially are, are the ultimate decision-makers, we all should participate in the process. In this case, the city manager works for the Council, not a portion thereof. Therefore, the Council should be involved in every step of this critically important process. While I will be supportive of the National RFP, the National Recruitment Process, I also don't want to ignore the fact that there very well may be highly qualified, highly talented local stars who might rise to, to, to the occasion. But as, as Alan and others have pointed out, this, this is a, among the most important decisions we make, and we should be making those decisions as a unit, as a body, together every step of the process.
Counselor Leach.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, echoing a lot of the sentiments from my colleagues, but I don't have a really strong opinion on option one or option two versus the, the committee or the full Council, and the, most of this is going to come back to the full Council. It's more about that kind of level of work that, like, I think Counselor Koschinsky was talking about of really just the detailed work of writing something and then bringing it back to full Council. If we want to go the full Council route for every piece of the, of this puzzle, I think, with, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus here, but we just went through, you know, our auditor recruitment process, and not everybody was participating at the full level. We had some folks who, you know, didn't submit, you know, candidate scoring for our, our candidates, and it is a lot of work. You know, it took me several hours to go through and read 28 candidates' applications and score them. And so I want to really press upon all of us to, to do that work and, and really take this seriously. As some of us have already said, this is one of the most important things that we will do this year. So I will kind of go along with, with the consensus on which direction to take, but I wanted to give those few thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I agree with Counselors Zelenka and Counselor Clark and everyone else who's spoken to this so far. The one thing that I think that would help us expedite the process is if there was a small subcommittee of Council Leadership and at least one other counselor to review the RFP or RFI for the recruitment firm going out. I don't think that everybody needs necessarily to be involved in that part of the process. I think that, you know, a small group of us could review the applications of the search committees or the search firms that would be making presentations to us, and then bring back a recommendation to full Council, and then we can move forward from there. That would be my only caveat to a motion that would be basically the second option, and then we move forward with the full participation of Council through the rest of the process.
Counselor Evans, I'm going to ask a clarifying question first before we move on to Counselor Yay. With that description, do you mean that the, a smaller group of counselors would participate in just that number one, review request for information responses, and then the full Council would participate in the interviewing of potential vendors and the selection of the vendor?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just that first?
Just that part, yes.
First, step one of, or number one of step one, that would be a separate group.
And if I could make a suggestion, if Counselor Evans, you ultimately make that motion, I would actually default to motion one and then add your caveat.
And then add there, okay.
Thank you very much. Counselor Yay.
Yeah, actually, that was my exact question. It was just to make sure I understood what Counselor Evans was proposing. Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think a lot of my feelings are around Counselor Leach's. I don't have a strong opinion either way. If the majority felt comfortable letting a committee do what was steps one and two, I would also be comfortable with those, but I don't have a strong enough opinion to argue about it. So I, I would be happy to go along with that, Counselor Evans. I do think that, yes, this is extremely important, but, you know, a lot of the things we do are important. So if there's any ways that we can find to free up time for the other important things that we are doing, I am in full support of that, especially things that are a little bit more busy work. We don't all need to necessarily do that, and from my perspective, I think we're a good team, and some of these things we can trust each other to do.
Counselor Groves? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just, after hearing Counselor Evans' proposal, I, I really liked that. I think it kind of streamlines the process, but we will still be involved, and I agree with what Counselor Yay said as well. I do think it's important that when it comes down to actually interviewing the candidates and interacting with the candidates, that that would be important for all of us to be involved. I have not been part of a city manager hiring process as a city counselor, but I have as an executive manager in the city. And one of the events that I thought was very helpful when we, was a kind of a mixer with counselors and the exec team when the candidates were here, and it was a really good opportunity to have conversations with the candidates that weren't in the formal, structured sit at the table. I mean, you know, people, people are different in a formal interview where you're sitting around a table and when you're in more of a relaxed social setting, and I think you learned some interesting things, traits. You hear things you might not hear otherwise. So I, I would encourage us to try and find, you know, without overloading the, the process, but try and find multiple opportunities to engage with these people because they, the city manager in our Council manager form of government is very, very influential and critical to the operations of the city. So I, we, we've, we've got to do the best job we can of selecting the right fit for this community, and, and if we can set up the process to help us do that, I think that that would be really beneficial to the outcomes. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah. I actually don't think it's a time saver. I actually think it could actually work against, against us in the timeframe. A deadline is a deadline, whether or not. A deadline is a deadline, regardless of whether or not it's for two people or eight people. If you have a schedule and a process and everybody has to keep to it, the deadline is the deadline, and it would take the same amount of time whether or not with all the councilor weighs in or just one or two people, which I strongly advise against. And you might find that actually not being involved in process doesn't lead to a quicker decision, it actually leads to more discussion and more time than it takes to have everybody just weigh in on a set schedule. In particular, to the position description, I think we already have a position description, so we have that draft. It really needs to be updated, as opposed to creating a new one, which is very different, and I think we all should weigh in on that. But I think you might find that actually most people want to be involved, not just one or two people, in the choice to do the detailed work of picking a firm, which, by the way, I think is critically important in the process. Who you pick and who does the search is very important. And if counselors choose not to be involved in that detailed work, they can not put their comments in by the deadline, and so a committee doesn't really accomplish anything. If people can self-select them out if they feel like they don't want to participate, as long as we keep to a schedule and a deadline.
Thank you. Counselor Kucinski?
Yes, to clarify, one of the reasons why the full council takes longer is because council has regularly scheduled meetings that occur on a regular calendar, calendars published out well in advance, whereas a committee who is, for example, reviewing requests for information would be able to meet outside of that calendar. And so, for example, we got the request for information back in August, when we don't have any meetings, they would be able to do that work in that timeframe. Is that why the committee option is shorter? Is because you're not trying to squeeze it into pre-established?
Yes, both of those timelines assumed we'd be working with the traditional work-session schedule.
Okay. And so if there was a desire to make this go, make this faster with a full council, that would probably require scheduling additional full council meetings?
Or using more work session time.
Thank you.
Counselor Evans?
Well, again, I'll respectfully disagree with my colleague here. I think that I've been through this process before, when I was on the LTD Board of hiring a general manager. And I think that having that first level of screening by a smaller group of the board makes sense in terms of selection of the recruitment firm. It will all come back to the full council at some point. I just think that we need to have a winnowing process, that there's going to be a number of firms, I believe, that are going to submit proposals to us, and I really want to be able to get that down to a point where that's manageable for all the rest of council, to be able to evaluate those firms that have serious proposals before us, rather than those firms that are just, you know, kind of throwing in their typical proposal and thinking that, you know, hey, you know, we're such and such a firm, and our reputation is going to precede itself, kind of deal. So that's the reason why I suggested that part of the process be developed by a smaller group of council, and it will come back to the full council for consideration. But, you know, I'll say what I said, you know, before when we had this conversation specifically around the selection of the auditor. I was kind of surprised that, you know, some candidates who made the playoffs who had no business being in the playoffs. So, you know, I want to make sure that, well, you leave Cleveland alone. No, if you got, you know, if somebody is going to be a finalist, or an organization or a firm is going to be a finalist, they need to be a finalist and have the bona fides to be a finalist, and not, you know, somebody who just kind of put their name in the hat and wants to be there because they're a, you know, a quote-unquote, a firm that is, you know, not necessarily qualified to do it, but, you know, we're giving an opportunity to somebody who may or may not have the right credentials or experience to do this kind of work.
Counselor Zelenka?
I actually fully expect us to not necessarily confine ourselves to the scheduled meetings. I expect us to have extra meetings on this. It makes sense, given it's one of the most important decisions we'll make as a council. So I don't, having extra meetings whenever we need them should expedite the process unto itself, not just sticking to the council's regular work session meetings. And so I think that we could make it work that way. I'm okay with your suggestion, if you ask for volunteers about who wants to be on it and wants to do the work, can be on the committee. If you find it's eight, then I guess you find it's eight.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I may be jumping the gun a little, because this, my next comments may be more for the time when we already have a professional firm engaged to assist us in the process. But the county has been through this process of choosing a new chief executive much sooner than we have. They've done it more recently than we have, and I think they did a very good job, and we may want to look at some of their processes to copy some of the things that they did there. I would also suggest that Eugene has a national reputation in a number of ways, but the University of Oregon absolutely does. And I suspect that it may be in our interest to consider how the university may be able to help us in this process, and/or how we might leverage their wider net of influence in the country to be able to make sure we get the best possible candidate pool. So just thoughts. Thank you.
Seeing no, last questions from council. I will now turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
So I may need a little help with this, City Attorney. Move to proceed with option one as outlined in attachment A to the AIS, with the additional caveat that the first part of the process be handled by a subcommittee of the council made up of the council president, vice president, and volunteers from the rest of the council.
Yes, the only clarification I would say is when you say first part of the process, I would identify it as step one.
Step one, okay.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any additional? Oh, thank you, Counselor Leach. I did not hear you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion from council? Yes, Counselor Kucinski?
Just as a clarifying point, if we have more than two additional volunteers, that would have a quorum, and then it would switch away from being a subcommittee to just being council?
So regardless of whether you have just council leadership or if it was council leadership in one, it is a public body that is subject to public meetings law, because the body would be making a recommendation to you, a governing body. So it's not quorum that actually tips that, it's the subject matter of the discussion. So it will be a public body subject to public meetings law regardless.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none, it will now take a vote for this motion. All in favor? Four, five, six, seven, all opposed. One, and the motion passes with a vote of seven to one. Thank you. That concludes our agenda item.
Actually, Mayor, if I could, this would be a great opportunity, if you could, to get all those that would like to participate, so we could get that recruitment, selection process rolling for you soon.
Yes, thank you very much. All counselors who would like to be a part?
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Keating?
Who was the one against?
Counselor Clark voted against the motion.
I wanted all of us to do it.
That is what the motion is, I understand it, is it not? We're all doing it except for the first part, the RFI part, correct?
Yes, and if all council volunteers to be a part of the committee, it will still be the entire council. That is correct. Thank you for that clarification.
I'll change my vote to yes, then just, you know, for the sake of the process.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Revision to the vote, and that motion passes eight-zero. Counselors, asking for your service on hiring subcommittee. Who would be interested in that work? Please raise your hands.
Mayor, just clarifying, I'm sorry. This is, this, subcommittee, as I understand it, if I understand Counselor President's motion, simply reviews the firms that will be doing the search, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And make a recommendation, counsel.
Yes, just step one in your meeting materials, Counselor, if you have a visual of those.
Clarification. So what I heard him say was that the committee would review the vendors and make a recommendation to the full council.
Yes.
Step one here says, "and select the vendor." So that's not part of it.
Correct.
They would winnow it down for a full decision by the council. And we go through all the firms anyway. So we're just adding a step, actually, but which won't shorten the process.
So the way the chart is set up, it was outlining all the processes, so if you, council two that has the committee, the meetings that are identified here are actually the full council meetings, so under both processes, you had selection of the vendor actually happening with council, so that it's, it'll be consistent. And so you'll be able to have your, the committee review the respondents, and then the full council will make the decision. But in either process, the full council is going to make the decision. But to Counselor Zelenka's point, you added the subcommittee doing the review of the responsive firms to the RFI.
Right, for, it's actually a committee, because it's not a, it's not a subcommittee of a committee, we're just creating a committee.
Just a committee.
We don't have, we don't have subcommittees. But, so if the, when we get back to council, is the intent to have all of the firms laid out with the recommendation of why these three were selected, or these three were selected for interviews?
So Counselor Zelenka, is that?
Is it a one-firm recommendation, or?
Directed towards City Attorney?
No, it's directed at the maker of the motion.
We would, my vision would be that we would have, you know, two or three firms that we would recommend back to the full council for review and selection.
And, but all of the firms would be formal?
Yeah, yeah, but we would, we would, we would, we would zero down on, you know, what we would feel are probably the three most qualified firms to recommend to back to council for selection. That would be, that's my vision. Like I said, there are certain people or certain firms that shouldn't be in the playoffs.
Thank you, counselors.
Don't start with me.
I think what I need is an indication of, by raising of a hand, and City Attorney, correct me if there's any other additional, more formal process we need, but for the counselors who would like to join this committee as a part of this first step, please raise your hand. I will list you. Yes, Counselor Leach?
Oh, just making sure I'm on the committee.
Thank you. Counselor Leach, Counselor Zelenka?
Counselor Yeh?
Counselor Yeh?
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. Counselor Keating, do you have a question? Or were you raising your hand to join the committee?
No, no, don't volunteer me for it, please.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Leach, Counselor Zelenka, Counselor Yeh, Counselor Evans, as a member of council leadership. Point of clarification to the attorney, does the mayor join this committee?
Good question. We actually hadn't had, it's definitely not my decision. It's up to you if you wanted to. It's really up to council to decide that. I would expect there to be a motion that is just passed identifying the committee, so whether, Mayor, if you would like to be a point of that.
This is one of those situations where, Mayor, you're basically a fly on the wall. I mean, you're there, but you, you know, it is a council, you know, decision council process.
Yes.
It is a, just from a charter perspective, the council makes the decision to hire, and the council, so how the council would like you to be participating is really the will of the council.
Thank you. And the only reason I asked is that if the council were to ask me to participate as a volunteer on that committee, I would be happy to join you. But there's plenty of other things also to be working on. So we have Counselor Leach, Counselor Evans, Counselors Zelenka, Counselor Yeh, who have been identified as this committee. Do we need a motion to establish them?
If people just say that they're good with that, I think we're good.
We're good, okay. Thank you very much, counselors and volunteers.
Mayor, you can have, you can have my seat, Mayor, if you want, on that committee.
I think I'm on, I think I'm good with my committees. Thank you, Counselor. And with that, thank you all. This does conclude our agenda for today. Thank you very much. And I will now close our May 12, 2025 City Council Work Session. We are adjourned.